Received that from Tony Bridges, Tina Caddell, Catherine Turley Long and Steve Turley Long. Just to add what's already in your packs, there was a complication with access to the Lovell Gardens play area for the refurbishment of the equipment and it's resulted in the installer not being able to house their container on site. So the council's preferred contractor has had to have the equipment delivered to their yard which may incur extra costs. So I'm just letting everyone know.
Okay. And you will also note, comes up under 4.3, but anyway, somebody was, has been arrested for the setting far to the toilets. And we're awaiting a decision from the CPS whether to prosecute or not. Okay? Okay, item four reports. For one chairman's report, I attended the finance committee on the 16th of November, also one on the 21st of November and also meeting about Middle Street which will come up later under the line. On the 23rd I did the window judging for the Christmas festive market and attended the CHT and Food Hub management committees. On the 26th I attended the festive market. Thank you to everybody who took part. Well done Santa and not for children, not anybody here. And on the 27th, I attended the awards ceremony for the Watton air cadets. For two is the vice chairman's report because they had a lovely holiday.
They did have a lovely holiday, thank you. But before I went, I attended the finance meeting on the 16th of November.
Thank you. For three is district councillors' report. You got anything? And then I'll ask Claire.
Mr Chairman, as you know, I've been away for two weeks. But as you know, at the meeting at Cranswick, I wasn't invited to the first one. However, I was invited to the second one on last Friday, which is that I was travelling back from Spain and I didn't get back into Watton till well gone five o'clock. So I wasn't able to attend the meeting. I was invited.
Okay, thank you. Claire, do you want to report? Do you want to report on anything for the district, Claire? Want to do them all in one? Okay.
I couldn't attend the Cranswick meeting either, but I think Tina did. So I'm sure that she'll be able to report back at some point on that. So you would have probably seen that a severe weather emergency protocol briefing was sent out recently to all parish councils, so to yourselves as well, in relation to rough sleepers and risk in cold weather. And so when this is activated, all rough sleepers are contacted and offered bed space for the duration of the sweat period. And Breckland uses bed and breakfast and hotels in these circumstances, which could be outside the district. And not every rough sleeper will take up the offer of accommodation. So due to the Met Office forecasting actual or feels like temperatures zero or below are predicted for the next three nights. So Breckland will therefore be activating the sweat. And this means that we will make bed spaces available for any verified rough sleepers. And it's likely to last up to and including the night of Thursday 30th. So if you're concerned about a rough sleeper or you can, you can report them to the rough sleeper team at Breckland or just contact myself and I'll pass the information on. And if you believe that anyone's obviously in any immediate danger, then please call 999. And just wanted to sort of give an update on the conversations around Church Walk. So we're adopting a multi-agency approach to secure the best outcomes in response to the reported antisocial behaviour in Church Walk. And Breckland's economy and growth team are working closely with the police, local representatives, to look at potential solutions in the area specifically around signage. Is that on? Sorry, around signage, best options for lighting whilst seeking to hopefully retain benches. So there'll be an update on confirmed suggested measures in the next few weeks. And in the meantime, with the support of yourselves, Austin is hoping to organise a volunteer team to clear tree foliage, obstructing the current lights and cut back overhanging hedging to open up the verge areas. So just wanted to mention on the county council that there are 27 new gritters which will be taken to the roads for the first time later this winter in a boost to the annual push to help keep Norfolk moving safely during the winter months. And crews completed their first gritting runs of the season at the weekend. So they have a fleet of 58 winter vehicles which treat 2,200 miles of road on each full three hour gritting run. All A and B class roads and some C class roads are treated with a focus on commuter and major bus routes and as far as is possible on one route into all villages. And the A11 and the A47 are gritted by national highways. And Norfolk spends an average of 3.2 million each year keeping highways moving over the winter. Just in relation to, I think, I think you've probably got this a bit further down on your agenda, but the Middle Street project which is in the town plan. So I'm very pleased to see positive news from the county council and Breckland district council about potential progress coming forward. I've had the opportunity to promote and engage this project, which is an identified project in the town plan, as I just said, at both senior management and cabinet level at the county council. And I'm pleased to see it's well received and prioritised, albeit funding pending.
Okay, thank you. Fabian, did you want to say something at this point about Middle Street? No, no, come up and do that. Can you just bear in mind, we're not making a decision on it later on until it's under the line. Okay?
Thank you very much. So just to remind everyone, Fabian Eagle, I'm Norfolk County Council's Cabinet Member for Economic Growth. And as a county councillor, I represent the Brex which goes Ashill and all the way round Merton and then down to Thompsons, that area. So I'd just like to say, obviously I've got a vested interest in Middle Street because I do feel a vibrant Watton is very, very important for my villages and you are a hub for those villages around. And I want to see you as still as at Central spoke. Just to reassure you from obviously what councillor Bowles has already put forward, as there it is now pending funding, Norfolk County Council is putting some more money in it to take and develop those plans, pending funding. But it is now the top plan on that local transport plan short term. So obviously the only caveat, and to be totally honest and clear with you, is the biggest stumbling block will be the next stage of actually the funding of delivering. And if we can get the hurdle and the rest of my fellow county councils vote for the county deal on a level three on the 12th of December, then that will make sure that money and then that Watton, Middle Street is a top priority. What I really just came here for is I know what's always been said about Watton in the past. And it does call me that, you know, as much as my area straddles between here and Swaffham, Swaffham gets the money, Watton doesn't. And I do think Watton has some, is a unique shopping place for the set, for this, as a market town to have that many shops, you know, mini supermarkets. And I will congratulate you on your lights. I think they're very unique and it's lovely. And when you can see trees, you've got that joy of seeing that blossom in the spring and then you've done such a good job decorating them. But I was just really here just to back up, councillor Bowles has done a lot of work pushing forward on that. But just to say it's a high level and you know, it's not another fob off again. So we get the funding, it will be delivered. But thank you for.
Thank you. And I think we all appreciate what is being done for us at County Hall. And we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Michelle, now you've run off, did you want to add something? Run back.
I just want to, just Tina Caddell, obviously she can't be here tonight, she just sent in a written report. But I think it's basically what Claire has said. It's just regarding a PC Austin wants to do like a spruce up of Church Walk. And also about the Cranswick meeting, that we should be getting an update from the manager at Cranswick about how the meeting went.
Okay, thank you. Now you can run back up there again. Graham?
Yeah, I would like just to ask a question regarding the lighting in Church Walk. From the road up to the Lindunco?
Yeah.
There was only two street lamps. And if you leave here and you look down there, the lighting is totally inefficient, even if you cut back the trees. So are they gonna put extra lighting? Has that been looked into?
We.
Lovely, okay.
The Graham, the clerk did report last time when we asked about the lighting. Could it be any stronger? But we're told that's the strongest lighting that could go in there at the current time. But that was Breckland who dealt with that one. So there'll be other options looked at, I understand. Okay. Right, yeah. Okay, we'll move on then to the clerk's report at 4.5. You have a copy of that. I probably preempted that one as I said before, just said, it is. Don't think there's anything else on the clerk's report. Said the office has been announced after due to sickness. Internal audit is taking place on Thursday, tomorrow, yeah? Michelle?
Just want to add verbally if that was okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
One being we've received a grant application from the Loch Neaton Junior Park Run. I know the town council would normally consider this in March every quarter. But I wonder whether it would consider possibly having a look at it at next meeting? That's one thing I wanted to ask. And the other thing was councillor Bridges has been working with Liz on an action plan and equipment needed to fulfil some of the goals of the FUD action group.
Okay, thank you. Catherine? There's, I believe, another, one of the societies in Watton came in, got an application form today for a grant. So we could, we could end up with two of them and the money's there. So we might as well deal with them. Although it's partly out of sync. Graham?
Can I ask, how difficult is it to apply for a grant? Is there a lot involved in it? The only reason I said it is because if someone wanted to apply for a grant, then you're gonna start jumping through loads and loads of hoops. They're gonna say, oh, I don't think I'd bother.
We have an application pack which you get online. Or somebody could just come into the office and one of the office staff would take somebody through the form. It's not a difficult form. It's just questions like, what do you want the money for? Who are you anyway? You know, it's not, it's not intensive. So it's not a difficult form. But if people are worried about it, I'm sure the office staff would be very supportive in helping them to complete that.
Graham, there is a limit on it. It's £500. £500 is the limit, the most you can ask for. And you've got to say what it's for and how many people it'll benefit and that sort of thing. Okay, lovely. Okay, we'll move on then. For seven to receive notes and suggestions in relation to the Watton neighbourhood plan. Liz, do you want to come up the front? We can all throw things at that one. Oh, go there, that's fine. Oh, I'll come back. Is there somebody to do it? All right, yeah. Would you wait for a minute? I've missed something out. Report from lead councillors. Is there any report? Yep. Jill?
You may be aware, we had the Christmas market on Sunday. Firstly, I'd just like to thank Thomas for helping us out. But especially Don's daughter, because she's not a member of the council. And she was earning brownie points from dad, I think. But she was a great help.
She'll be getting her flat, found a pound of flesh later on, won't she, don't?
Yeah. And Tina Cruz came and helped out for quite a long while as well. The everyone's a winner, really was a winner. I think we made a tremendous amount on the tombola. We had donations, we had a small amount of prizes that we'd actually bought. All in all, the tombola made £355.50 for the mayor's charity, the Food Hub. So we were really pleased with that. So thanks to anybody that donated. If I've missed anything, I'm truly sorry. Sue Dent actually, well, I don't know how she does it. And of course, our clerks, deputy clerks, everybody. And, you know, they all deserve an enormous, well, Christmas bonus. But certainly a great deal of thanks from us. Well, obviously, yeah, if people could start saving things that they don't like at Christmas that they get as gifts, they'll be gratefully received for the Stalber next Christmas. We've got some ideas in here and written down in case I forget them for next year. But we'll discuss that at the events meeting. But once again, thank you, everybody. Oh, and Santa.
Wherever he is.
Santa, wherever he is. Thank you for coming, Santa.
Thank you very much, Jill.
This is on behalf of Tony who can't be here tonight. He started to do some work with Liz and he'd like to be nominated as a lead councillor for whatever the committee's called, the drainage work, anyway. Yeah, the emergency plan. He'd like to be nominated as the lead councillor for that.
Yeah, those in favour? Yeah, right, fine, he's there. Okay. Thank you, Catherine. Right, Liz, now, off you go.
I mean, I took the initiative about making these notes about the neighbourhood plan because I was on the steering group and there are only about four of us left, aren't there? And if the, if the Breckland council stick to the draft that they gave us next week, they will be publishing the referendum date and the documents and so on. And it just occurred to me that, you know, there are a lot of new people in Watton. In fact, I was sitting beside a lady at the Christmas tree who moved here two years ago. She lives on Abbey Road. She will, if she's registered to vote, she will get a paper and she probably doesn't know very much about it. So the idea was that perhaps we have a public meeting where we present it again to all the residents who are interested in it. And I just wanted to present that to you and see what councillors thought.
Thank you. Thomas?
As someone who's not been an adult for very long, I did not hear of the neighbourhood plan before I joined the town council. And I think it's a brilliant idea to spread awareness. I don't feel like a lot of people know about it.
Okay. Yes, Dan?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I concur. It's been a while since we did go public on this. And there has been a high turnover and a lot of new residents coming in and even some that have grown up, become adults.
Some of us become, become children again, but there you go. I don't think there'd be a problem with that, Liz. We'll find an appropriate time when the Charlotte Harvey, we can put it on there and we'll do that. Everybody happy to do that? Yeah, okay. Anything else you want to add? That's it. Lovely. Thank you. Okay. Number five to note and amend the works in progress list, you've had that. I don't think there's anything that's red on it. They're all yellow or green. So are you happy? Sorry, Graham?
Yeah, this Lovell Gardens, the contractor is saying it's incurred extra costs.
Yeah.
Right. Well, when we discussed it last time, we said that that will be down to the contractor to get your stuff in there. Right? So why should we be paying extra? I don't agree with it.
Okay. I think if there'll be an extra cost, if our contractor's doing it for the company, the company will pay the contractor, I would have thought, if they're storing it for them. But we'll have a discussion about that. It's fine. Okay. Item six, public participation. No, you want to be a member of the public, Claire, then say anything? No. Okay. Item seven is finance. You're asked to approve the payments which you've received for November. You would have had the income and the expenditure and Michelle sent an amended copy out. You're happy to accept those? Well, you should have done. So you're barred from the rest of the meeting. Okay, that's one. Michelle?
Can I just, obviously since sending that out, I had an additional payment for Discreet Security Limited for the security at the festive market. And that's £410.40. So it wasn't on the list, but you're happy to.
And I did it like the way they congregated together and moved in threes wherever they went. If they got attacked by anybody. Okay, so you're happy to accept all of those? Yep. Okay. You are asked to receive the draft minutes from the finance committee on 16th of 11. So all you're doing is saying you're receiving them, not any comment on them. You're asked to accept the recommendation from the finance committee on the 16th of 11. Catherine, number one?
In actual fact, the first recommendation, which is about the HR committee being asked to consider the impact of increased site ownership on the town operatives workload and maintenance contracts. We talked about this and we wanted HR to consider the implications because we're aware that since we took on our town operative, we've actually taken on increased sites and we haven't done anything either in terms of really changing our maintenance contracts or looking at the town operatives work. So we were asking that the council look at that. But in actual fact, that recommendation was overtaken by a further recommendation from the joint HR and finance committee. So can I just ask that you note that recommendation?
Happy to note that. Okay, next.
The second one, we recommended that the council opens discussion with Carbrook Council about a contribution towards maintenance. And this is in relation to the officers mess side, which straggles the Carbrook and Watton boundaries.
Happy to accept that? Yep. Okay. Seven four to receive the draft minutes and the finance committee held on the 21st. So we're just receiving those. Okay. Seven five to accept the following recommendations. Catherine?
We had quite an in-depth discussion about what events we hold, how we should categorise them. And given that Sue Dent no longer has events as such as part of her role, because she's now moved on to the community projects officer role, how we should be delivering on the events that we do have. And we came forward with several recommendations. The first one is we looked at the events themselves and we categorised them as two different distinct kinds. So we were asking the committee to agree that these categories, the first category is civic commemorative and non-commercial annual events. And these are the type of events that Sue will continue in her role as community projects officer. So can we ask that, oh, and the second category, sorry, is more showcasing, showcasing of Watton and events that are about the economic growth of the, of the town and selling our town. So we're looking at bigger events and the ones like fireworks, festive market, that type of event as a second category. So the first recommendation is about those categories.
You're happy to accept those? Yeah, okay, fine. Two?
Right. As a consequence of that, as I say, Sue, who's done a tremendous job, and I don't know how she's managed this year, because she's carried out the work as of a community projects officer while still carrying on parts of her PEXO role without any additional funding or anything. But because she was committed to make sure that those events happened. So we've been very fortunate in our stuff in there. But we realised that we had to look at delivering those larger scale events in a different way. We talked about having an events management company in and what that could mean. And we looked at issues of they would, we would just give it to them and they would deliver it. And then we thought about, well, how does that fit with our volunteers? How much control do we keep of the events? How much is it our event? And in the end, we'd like to put forward a recommendation that we employ a full-time events and marketing officer. The role of that officer would be the large events and marketing. By marketing, we need, mean like the promotion of the events. But also it can be in things like, one of our unique selling points in Watton is heritage. And because we do have assets which are listed and have heritage value, we sometimes need to do research into making sure that we're getting best value in terms of the people who are doing work on our assets or anything to do with that side of things. So what we, as well as doing the events, we would expect this officer to be doing that marketing side, the research side, which would ease work on the existing office staff. Because at the moment, when we need to get information about people who will do work on the clock tower or Church Walk or anything like that, that diverts time from basically Michelle or Jane. And the staff in our office are very much under pressure. I just want to get, I'm sorry to go on, but I just want to give you a stat. This is a similar sized town to us. In fact, maybe a. This is a similar sized town to us, in fact maybe a little smaller. They set their precept higher. Their band D is almost twice as high as ours. Their staffing budget equates to 409 hours of staffing input, and they pay about £400,000. We employ only seven staff, 269 hours, and only set aside just over £230,000 in our staffing budget. We have been aware for a while that we don't have the staffing cover in the office that we should, not for a month council, not anymore, not for what we're asking our staff to do. And this would be a way of, and the next recommendation we shall come to, would be a way of addressing this and a way of making sure that our events are properly delivered. So the recommendation has several levels, really. It is about events. It's also about making sure that we have staffing to meet our modern needs. So can I ask if you would support recommendation two?
You proposing that?
Yeah.
Is there a second after that then? Thank you.
Which is the full-time events and marketing officer.
I'll see those in favour. That's fine. Against? Abstaining? One. Okay. Catherine?
The second, sorry, the third recommendation is to employ, and this is where we come back to the recommendation from the Finance Committee that I asked you just to note, because we're recommending from this joint committee that we employ a second full-time town operative. In this, they have about, about seven staff who actually carry out maintenance work and work as town operatives. We have one. Now, I know some of our work probably is done on the maintenance contract level, which isn't there, but not to a great degree, I have to say. We do expect an awful lot out of the hours that Anne works. And so we're proposing that we take on a second full-time town operative, not to have any seniority, but to work alongside our existing town operative.
I'll make that a full... Is there a second after that? Thank you, Stan. Those in favour? Okay. Those against? Those abstaining? Two. Thank you. Okay, it's carried.
Thank you.
Item eight is to consider repair of the clock mechanism on the High Street clock tower. If you look in your papers, find it, Jane has put in there that... Clock mechanism. She said, "Consideration has been given to whether any type of electrical movement could be installed to operate the clock, but there are issues around the cost of installing electrical supply to do this. And both English Heritage and the Historic Buildings Officer at Breckland have identified a need to obtain listed building consent to any proposed changes to the mechanism." So in other words, you can't just go and put an electric motor in. You've got to have permission to do that because it's, the building is listed. The Historic Buildings Officer has said, "I would advise if the clock mechanism is of historic interest," and we know it is, I think it was put in in 1846, something like that, "then there will be a presumption in favour of its retention, unless it being demonstrated that there has been a catastrophic failure and cannot be salvaged." Well, I'm not aware that is the case. "The mechanism can be repaired with Smiths of Derby, who do all these town clocks, quoting £6,903, which is on October the 22nd, to undertake a complete overhaul. No further quotes have been sought to date." Okay, so thing there is really you're being advised by those in the know that the mechanism should be repaired in the first instance. Somebody says you can't repair it and it's catastrophic failure, then we can look at something else. Before you say to me, Graham, who else can do it? Well, okay, but I was going to say, you see, in future, when we end up employing somebody as an events and marketing person, that would be their job to go out and find companies that do it. At the moment, we operate through the one we've always had. I...
I'm only thinking of the long term, right? So if we spend £6,000, £7,000 getting it fixed, then in five years' time, we've got to spend another £6,000 or £7,000, right? If we put in to have it changed to an electric, I'd say, if they're going to charge us £6,000 to do that, the maintenance on that is going to be virtually nothing.
I know. Trouble is in the first instance, we have to go back and see if the old one can be repaired. I would be very inclined to say to any company that did it that, obviously, they can't give you a guarantee, but we would expect them to carry out as part of the price an annual maintenance of it and to advise us if it's coming to the end of its life, we need to do something else. What we don't want to get into a position again is suddenly it just stops working and nobody can do anything about it. Okay. All right. There is one other thing about the electrical mechanism. There is no electric supply in the clock tower. So we would have to pay National Grid to put an electric supply. I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I'm just saying that has to be added to any cost. Catherine, then Toby, and then Stan?
If we had a quote from Smiths of Derby in October 22, that means Smiths of Derby were saying it could be repaired. Part of the condition seems to be that if it can be repaired, because it's a clock of historic interest, it should be, which would mean we wouldn't be able to put the electric mechanism in. We'd have to have somebody like Smiths of Derby or another who could restore the mechanical, that mechanism.
Okay. Toby? Okay. Stan?
I was pro electrifying, the electrification of the clock as opposed to the mechanics of it, taking into account cost. But the reality of it is, apart from the heritage aspect, and we've got the authorities telling us that if we can get it repaired, we should. That suggests to me that we will meet resistance if we try and get planning permission to electrify it. The cost to put an electricity feed in into the clock tower would be prohibitive and perhaps unrealistic and not a good use of town money. I think we have to consider the long term and take into account that the quote we had to repair, it was October 22, so that clock has been out of action for over a year. And we're constantly getting comments from residents about the clock not working. And it is one of the few features of the town that people enjoy and relate to and see it as symbolic of the town. I feel that we should grasp this, take a grown-up approach and pay the money to Smiths, who are reputable and know what they're doing with the clock, and hopefully it'll last for a decent time. But I feel we should go down the route of repair.
Okay. Dom?
I agree with everything that's been said. I think that the thing, because it's been recommended that we go along and get it repaired rather than go the other way, I think we stand a really good chance of getting a grant through English Heritage towards the cost of having it repaired. So it may not cost us anywhere near that kind of money. It may be that we pay 50% and we get a grant for the other 50%.
Okay. Sorry, just a minute. Jill?
As the quote was over a year ago, we need a new quote.
Yep. Okay. Graham? Okay. Okay, I've heard you. Sorry, Toby, yeah?
It is an historic clock. Lots of, just, it's like us saying, this building, for example, that we should, we try and just add, you know, modernised technologies just for the sake of it. To say, it is an old asset. It will, at some point, it will break down because it's quite old. And part of keeping something like that is maintaining it, and that will cost. And if you think about the Verroca cost of trying to put new power feed into it, I think, I would imagine, it would be extortionate, the kind of cost at this present time. So I think it's not unrealistic for us to try and repair the old clock, the current clock. But if you think about it, a lot of the, you know, protected assets, they will, because they're old buildings or old assets, they will cost to maintain. And I don't think we can get away from that. So I think we just need to... There's a reason why we're choosing to want to repair it, is the historic aspect and the value added to the town. And I think, you know, representing people of Watten, I'm sure the people of Watten, I think that would be in the best interest of the town because we're trying to protect the town asset. And that's the way I would say it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll propose on the chair, you won't say something?
When you look from the outside and you see that clock, you ain't going to have a clue what's behind it. And what you're proposing is just a drain on resources. It's going to go on and on and on. And eventually, that will come to a point where it is not able to repair it. And then we've got to start all over again. So why don't we get a cost in for the electric supply and go from there to find out what it would cost if it was available? True, sir?
Stan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I default to a mantra that you don't save money by not spending it. You save money by spending it wisely. And I respectfully suggest we move on from this because we will go around in circles.
Thomas?
Thank you. I do remember the clock tower breaking when I was in high school. That has to be about 10 years ago now. So if we're looking at a cost of approximately seven to eight K every 10 years, eventually it'll get more expensive, there's more bits breakdown, I assume. So that's looking at just one grand a year maintenance. And now we're just going to ask ourselves the question, is that worth the money? I think some people will say yes and some people would say no.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to propose on the chair that we contact Smiths about repairs to the current mechanism, ask them for an updated quote, because it's a year out, so it's going to be more, and also what would the cost be of an annual maintenance carried out by them on the clock? Unless the repairs come with that. Okay, so I propose that. Those in favour? Okay. Those against? Fine, that's carried unanimously. Right. Item nine, the Worsingham gates. We're asked to agree to the removal of the Worsingham gates into storage as a short-term measure to prevent further deterioration. Because the longer they're out in the open, the worse they're going to get. Okay? So what we're asking is that we have them moved into storage, then we come to the next bit. Are you happy? Sorry. Yes? Well, I was hoping, we've got to get somebody to take it down. It's not an easy thing to do. We're going to have to pay for that. But I was hoping whoever did that, when we get a quote, would include his storage in it. But we'll have to come back to you with that. All you're asking to do is to agree the removal of them. Yeah. Are you happy with the principle of removing them? Yeah? Okay. The next bit then, that we should seek advice from English Heritage and Andrew Gayton. Somebody remind me who Andrew Gayton is? Heritage. Yep. And the quote is, "There is written evidence that in 1999-2002, work was done on the Worsingham gates, church walk Watten. This was the rededication of the gates, as 2002 was the centenary of the King's Coronation for which the gates were hung. The work was carried out at Her Majesty's Prison, it was then Her Majesty's Prison in Weyland, and the project was overseen by a named individual. It is difficult to establish to what extent the work was for immediate restoration or replacement. As the gates are now in post-repair, Watten Town Council seeks guidance on the provenance and historic value of the existing gates, and if necessary, on what work should be undertaken." So what we're saying, if they take them down, we then get English Heritage and the Historic Buildings Officers to look at them and say, "Yeah, they're historic, or there's nothing left of the original things, and these are only 30 years old, but they've fallen to bits." Okay? So that's what we need to do now. Sorry. Now, these are going to be called the Worsingham gates. Well, we've got to do something with them. So there's a proposition. Are you happy to go along with that one? Yes? Thank you. Fine. Okay. Number 10, to consider quotes received for the tree assessments. And you've had two quotes there. Quote one is a walkover survey, which may include more detailed inspection of individual trees, fixed prices £745 plus VAT, and to look at Bridle Row Play, Arrow Lockneat, Jubilee Garden, Zepford Road allotments, Semperley Churchyard, Church Road allotment, Charles Way, Hairs Green and Heritage Park. The next one is to undertake a ground-based survey by exception. That means the report will only specify those trees that need work rather than noting all the trees. And that would look at Bridle Road Lock, no, it's all the same roads anyway. And that would be £2,995 plus VAT. So we have to have a tree survey. Do you want to go with quote one or quote two? Would you like to make an offer? Well, they are different, yes. I make no further comment. Stan?
Thank you, Chair. I'm concerned at the first quote. I wonder if he's left a figure off the front or if they have left a figure off of the front of that quote. Because the amount of time alone that's involved, let alone the expertise that we'd be paying for, the time alone isn't commensurate to that fee. So I feel that if we're satisfied that we have been given an accurate price, I'm alarmed by it, and I, again, I know it might go against grain for some councillors, but buying cheapest isn't always buying best. And I, I think that we need to be looking at what exactly we're going to get for that money.
Michelle?
I just want to say, obviously, that the first quote is who we have used for many years. That's all.
Is it the second company that said about the, okay, the, not wishing to prejudice issue. The second company who put in said, "There was an issue to do with the trees at Heritage Park next to the road that's being built. We went out with the tree officer, tree protection officer, Breckland, who looked at it and said, "It's having no effect on those trees at all." So, anyway, sorry, somebody else is going to say so. Graham?
I think it's quite difficult for us to make any decisions on these tree assessments because I don't think anyone here is qualified to say whether it's good, bad or indifferent. So it's a major problem, you know?
Okay. So, sorry, Dom?
I was just going to propose that we go with quote one because they're the people we've used in the past and not had any problem with. And if they come back with anything that's different from £745 plus VAT, then we reassess after that.
Okay, that's a proposition. Stan?
Yeah, on the back of that, Dom, can I ask Chair that, as the clerk has alluded, we have used these people previously without issue, that we ask her for some counsel towards the matter to help us make our decision?
Ask?
The clerk for counsel towards...
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. Was that you? Keith, did you have your hand up? No? Okay, fine. You could ask Michelle for her opinion. You don't have to give it. I think she gets summed up when she said, "It's the first lot we've had before and we never had a problem with them." Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but we've had, for some, I think we've just decided to go out with three quotes. But I mean, you're better off to know who you've used many years before, but obviously...
Catherine? Catherine?
I propose we accept quote one.
Okay. Dom proposed that, so you seconding that? Fine, okay. I'd propose a second, are all those in favour of quote one? Thank you. Courage. Okay. We're now on to 11. Planning. Keith, you, were you able to do this despite the fact you were in sunny Spain? You all seem to have gone to the Iberian Peninsula about... Okay? Yep?
I was rather intrigued though by a sojourn park in an direction of a new cycle store. Which can be anything from a tiny little shed to a shop.
Okay. He does send, okay. No? No, nobody? No? Oh, okay, fine. Well, we'll agree with them then. Okay. We're, 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 say we're disappointed. Okay. That's it, Keith, is it? Fine, thank you. Okay, item 12, pass a resolution to exclude the press and public to consider confidential matters. You're happy to do that? Yes? Fine, lovely. Tell me when it's off.